All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order on September 26th at 6:30 PM. Charlie, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Sohane.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
And Chair Guerrero.
Here.
We have a quorum of six commissioners present.
Great, so we'll start by kicking off this meeting here with item 3.1. We're going to swear in our new commissioner, Deepak Sohane. Sohane, you got it.
Sohane, right?
Sohane, yeah.
Sohane, my apologies, I'll get that right. All right. And I want to invite Sheri up to the front here to help swear in Commissioner Sohane.
Want to go in down here?
Chair.
If you could raise your right hand, repeat after me and we'll share this mic. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Deepak Sohane.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I'll support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
As a planning commissioner for the city of Emeryville.
As a planning commissioner for the city of Emeryville.
Great, thank you, and if I could have you sign?
You've all been through this, right?
Yes.
It's like getting married.
So much congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, well, we want to welcome our new commissioner, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll continue on to item 3.2, and this is the consideration of the planning commission meeting schedule for 2020.
Thank you, Chair Guerrero, members of the commission. You have in your packets the proposed meeting schedule for next year, 2020. As always, we have taken into consideration city holidays and religious observances, including major Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist, Sikh, and Tao holidays. None of those conflict with any of the proposed meeting dates. The meeting dates are the normal fourth Thursday of every month, except for November and December, where there's a single meeting on the second Thursday of December. And all the other dates that are on this chart are really just for your reference. Really, you just need to remember the meeting dates to be here for them, and you can see you will receive your packets one week before that. And the other dates are the dates that we use for processing each packet. So I would request that the commission approve this schedule.
All right, thanks Charlie. Is there any commissioner that has any feedback or comments about the schedule? All right, and this is an action item, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve as suggested.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. That's moved by Commissioner Keller, and seconded by Commissioner Bahera.
Okay, I think you can do this by, without objection.
Okay.
If that's all right with everybody, if nobody objects, all right, it's unanimous then.
Great.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. We want to open up for a public comment for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? All right, we're moving on to item 5, approval of action minutes from our past meeting on August 22nd, 2019.
I just had a question, actually. I did, I was reading these and I did notice that there were sort of like a lot of open-ended questions that were answered in the meeting, and I just wasn't sure what the recording focus is in terms of the meeting minutes. I know there's a backup video that people can consult if they have any questions about what was the answer.
Are you referring to the study session item or to the public hearing items?
Well, so the temporary emergency family shelter one, when Fran had a series of questions, like the answers, I know they were answered in the session, and I just didn't see the answers in the meeting minutes, so I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, our standard protocol for public hearing items is to simply state that the staff person made a presentation, that the applicant responded to questions. Any public speakers, we would try to get the gist of what they said, and then the motion and the vote on the motion. That is generally what our action minutes are comprised of for every meeting.
Okay.
And then for a, and I have to say, these are actually even somewhat more elaborate than the council action minutes, if you've ever looked at those, they're even briefer. But the only exception is for study sessions where there is no action, and in that case we try to capture the gist of the commission's discussion.
Okay, okay, I just want to, yeah, and I think my, I think I'm okay with the way they are, and I would approve them, so.
Are there any comments or additions from the commission? All right, and so we can approve the minutes.
We need a motion and a sec.
I can motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
All right, so it's moved by Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Keller.
All right, Vice Chair Thompson, right? Yes. So I would, so Commissioner Barrera will abstain because she was not there, and Commissioner Sohane obviously would also abstain, so that leaves four of you to approve with two abstentions and one absent. So that's sufficient, so that's without objection of.
Yes.
Buddy? Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving on to item number 6, now this is your community development director's report.
Thank you, Chair Guerrero, members of the commission. First, with regard to recent city council actions, the council has met two times since your last meeting. They met on September 3rd and September 17th. On September 3rd, the council appointed new members to various boards and committees, and as you know, they appointed Deepak Sohane to fill the vacancy on the planning commission for a three-year term ending on June 30th, 2022. Of course, he was just sworn in, so congratulations again. The council also approved the local hazard mitigation plan and passed a resolution amending the general plan to incorporate the LHMP as an appendix to the safety element. As you may recall, you recommended that at your July 25th meeting. On September 17th, the council held a study session on the elimination of the minimum parking requirement. As I'm sure you recall, the commission held such a study session at your July 25th meeting, and the commission's comments were conveyed to the council. The council directed that the parking minimum be eliminated, but that disabled parking still be required based on the project's total estimated parking demand. So for example, if the estimated parking demand for a project was 100 spaces, they wouldn't have to provide any parking if they didn't want to, but they'd still have to provide four disabled spaces, because that's the requirement for 100 spaces. They also directed that bicycle parking be uncoupled from auto parking, but that the other bicycle parking modifications, such as the short-term lockers consideration and so forth, be referred to the B-PAC for their comments and be incorporated into the code at a later date, depending on what the B-PAC recommendations are. We will be bringing back an ordinance to a future council, commission meeting for your consideration of a recommendation of the city council, as soon as we can get that out, hopefully in the next couple of meetings. The council directed staff to prepare loan documents to facilitate the acquisition by Resources for Community Development, or RCD, of the properties at 3600, 3610, and 3620 San Pablo Avenue. That's where Doug's BBQ was and where the E-CAP is, that site there on the east side of San Pablo between 36th and 37th Streets. RCD is a nonprofit housing developer that owns the Bay Bridge Apartments, which are located immediately to the east of this site on San Pablo, I mean on 36th Street. And therefore, they are uniquely positioned to redevelop the site for affordable housing by combining it with the site they already own to the east. RCD has indicated that they would construct a 100% affordable housing project on the site and include ground floor space for E-CAP. Some of you may recall that the commission held a study session on this site in May of 2017, and any proposed development by RCD will of course require planning commission approval, so that may be coming to you in a future meeting, hopefully. The council also took a couple of actions related to 4300 San Pablo Avenue. As you recall, the commission approved a temporary emergency family shelter at 4300 San Pablo Avenue at your last meeting. That was not appealed, so your decision on that is final. At their September 17th meeting, the council approved a license agreement with the East Oakland Community Project for use of the site for up to 24 months for the shelter. As a separate item on the September 17th agenda, the council also authorized the release of a request for qualifications and proposals for an affordable senior housing or intergenerational housing development on the site, which would be the longer-term use of the site. The council also approved the first reading of an ordinance amending the Sherwin-Williams PUD to allow the removal of four street trees on the west side of Horton Street to facilitate utility undergrounding and the construction of the new 46th Street. As you may recall, the commission recommended removal of all of the street trees on the west side of Horton Street at your meeting on March 15th of 2018, a year and a half ago, and the council first considered it on April 17th, 2018. And at that meeting, they directed that further study be done to refine the design to minimize the elimination of trees. The result was the new plan that the council approved on September 17th, and final passage of that ordinance is scheduled for the council's next meeting on October 1st. And in other news, a couple of other council-related things, the council is scheduled to consider Wareham's appeal of the commission's approval of Marketplace Parcel B at their October 1st meeting next week. At that meeting, they will decide whether to dismiss the appeal, remand the matter back to the commission, or hold a public hearing on the appeal. If they do schedule a public hearing, it would likely be held on November 5th or later. The council is also scheduled to hold a study session on the required unit mix for high-rise buildings on October 1st. The commission previously held a study session on this last December, December 13th, and the council held a study session on February 5th. At the council study session, they directed that further economic analysis be prepared, which we have now done, and which we will present to the council at their October 1st study session. Finally, in non-council and commission-related news, I just want to remind you all that the opening reception for the annual Emeryville Celebration of the Arts exhibition is next Friday, not tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, Friday, October 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and it will be at the Pickle Works Building at 1375 55th Street, which is around the corner from Doyle Street Cafe, and I hope to see you all there. That concludes my report, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Do we have any questions here from the commission? Looks like Commissioner Keller may have one.
Well, I have a couple, I don't know if it's appropriate time, but I just wondered if you can give us an update on the silent crossings and the bridge to Bay Street?
On the which crossing?
Silent crossings.
Oh, oh, yeah. I believe we are working on a design for, we've been told, concerning the railroad quiet zone, quiet crossings, we've been told by the PUC and the railroad that we are going to need to close one of those crossings in order to facilitate the quiet zone. Obviously, it wouldn't be 65th Street, so the question is, would it be 66th or 67th Street? We've had a traffic analysis done by Farr and Pierce, and I believe they're recommending closing 66th Street, but a final decision has not been made about that yet. So that, but it's moving, moving forward. And, I'm sorry, what was the other one?
The bridge.
The bridge.
The pedestrian bridge over Bay Street, yes.
The city manager announced at the September 17th council meeting that she had that day signed the construction contract. So it is moving forward. I was told today by the project manager that we will hope to see dirt moving around in the next few weeks. So it's.
Both good news, thank you.
Great, do we have any more questions here from the commissioners? All right, thank you, Charlie. We're going to continue on for item 8.1, this is a study session on the bird-safe building standards. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. We're item 7, and this is disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. We have Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I met with Bill Schrader on the 5850 project.
Thank you.
I just had a phone call, Bill Schrader on the 5850 project.
If I may, you only need to disclose anything that pertains to items on tonight's agenda.
Oh.
All right, that said, are there any other ex parte communications or conflicts of interest that you've had that pertain to tonight's agenda? All right, moving on. I want to invite Diana Keena up for item 8.1, this is the bird-safe building standards study session. Hello, Diana.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. So this is a session on bird-safe building standards. First, I want to give you a little background. Birds benefit people not only by their beauty and their songs, but also because they control insects and rodents and prevent the spread of diseases, and they pollinate plants and spread seeds. Their population has been declining. About 25% of the species in the country are on the list of concern, and I heard that the population of songbirds is about 2/3 of what it was in 1950. Bird glass collisions are estimated to kill between 365 million and 988 million years, birds a year in the US. And that study looked at what buildings and how many per building. More than half are at low rises, buildings less than 11 stories. About 44% are at houses, and less than 1% are at high rises, even though there's 24 per building per year in high rises. And we can prevent this. In the daytime, birds are more, that's when they run into the buildings, when they fly into the buildings. They don't have the depth perception and the contrast sensitivity we do, so they can't tell a reflection from the sky. They also can't see large panes of glass, and if there are two panes together, it looks like a passageway. At night, they sense the earth's magnetic field through magnetic sensors, and some of them are in the retina, and they are disabled by red light. They navigate toward the moon and the stars, so if the sky is glowing, that confuses them, and they fly toward the brightest light, eventually land, and then they fly into a building in the daytime. So in the 1950s, the buildings were like this one, they had windows that you could open, they had screens, they weren't that big. And in the 1960s, picture windows were invented, and then in the 1980s, whole buildings began to be covered with glass. And scientists started noticing birds flying into the buildings and tracking them and studying them, and then in 2005, there was a forum on that. Two years later, Toronto had guidelines. Four years after that, the US Green Building Council started a credit, and San Francisco adopted an ordinance. Couple years later, Oakland adopted a building permit review measure. Next year, Sunnyvale adopted voluntary design guidelines. In 2014, the study that I was quoting happened, and it made people realize that collisions happen in all building sizes. And the next year, the American Bird Conservancy updated their 2011 guide and emphasized that birds fly into all parts of buildings, pane sizes, and locations, even though they are more likely to fall, to fly into buildings that are near where the trees are. And then San Jose adopted voluntary measures, Richmond adopted an ordinance. 2016, the Cal Academy of Science in San Francisco did a study, and they found that around here, we have birds flying all year, and we have a lot of hummingbirds. Alameda adopted an ordinance last year, which the Building Industry Association thought was okay. And this year, Cal Green section was proposed, but has not been adopted. The way patterns need to be on windows to keep birds from flying into them is based on the shape of a bird flying. So if you have dots or horizontal lines, they need to be an eighth of an inch wide and two inches apart, or if you have vertical lines or dots, they need to be a quarter inch wide and four inches apart, or any pattern or art that provides that width and spacing. In terms of cost, Portland did a study of two of its buildings, and it found that the treatments, the bird-safe treatments, added .03% to one and .05% to the other, and so that's about $50 per $100,000, not a lot. A lot of bird-safe products are made in the US now, and if you're deciding how much glass to put on a building, glass costs more than concrete and steel. In terms of operations, bird-safe measures reduce heating and cooling costs, and Ashray, the heating and cooling people, say that buildings with more than 30% glass here have high heating and cooling costs. The San Francisco AIA originally opposed San Francisco's ordinance, but they changed their minds, and now they offer a class on how to design for it. So let's look at some examples. This one is parachute cord every four inches, a couple inches away from the window. These are film and tape stripes combined with art that looks like etching, more stripes, vertical dots. The Javits Center in New York City has a lot of glass, they were having so many birds fly into it that they replaced all the glass. That must have cost a fortune. But I don't think it cost much more of a fortune because it was like this. You can see, looking at a distance, it looks clear, but close up, you can see the dots. It's kind of like an advertising wrap that covers windows, but people can see out. Or you can use digital printing, this is an art pattern that meets the requirements. This building on the left has balconies that are white, I don't know if they're glass or not, but they're not, they're not clear, and the windows have fritting. The campus building on the right, the shades reduce the reflection on the glass, plus they have stripes. So I put a table in your staff report looking at what other jurisdictions had done, I added the proposal of the green building, the Cal Green, and I sort of added up how many cities did what. So in terms of what type of document it is, about five of them have ordinances or requirements, about four have voluntary measures, and about three, and not about, three have design guidelines. In terms of applicability to residential buildings, two said, well, if the building is 45 feet high or 50% glass, it applies. One said multifamily, one said no residential, that's the Cal Green, and the rest were silent. In terms of where glass treatment is required, mostly the earlier standards limited it to the lower part of the building where the trees are. Five now say all of the building, four say the lower 60 feet, and four, including Cal Green, say the lower 40 feet. Most of them say all building heights, but one says 35 feet, I think they're trying to exempt houses. In terms of location, eight say citywide and four say near open space. So in Emeryville, if we followed the first ordinance's example and had 300 feet from a two-acre open space, we would have the water, which is the highway and the street, and we would have around Sherwin-Williams and Horton Landing Park, which there might be some development parcels in there, not many. If we used a one-inch open space, that would include a couple more parks, and Pixar's open space, so that might have a few developable sites, and, oh, and Timoscall Creek Park. In terms of the kind of treatment required, all of the standards require visual markers to help the birds see the glass and muting reflections, so they don't mistake the glass for something else. And they all call for patterns such as fritting, which is ceramic dots or stripes or whatever. Stencils, art, etching, films, or screens or netting that are just not right up against the window, but close to it. Four recommend ultraviolet patterns, which is great because people don't see them, it would be a lot less intrusive, but the problem is that hummingbirds and raptors don't see them very well. Six follow the 2x4 rule, which I think was developed after the first couple standards were adopted. Five also say it's okay to use mullions, grates, louvers, angled glass, overhangs. And two say, well, somebody has to evaluate whether they're going to be reflective, as you can see on the drawings on the right, you can do those things and still get reflections. Six of the standards for treating freestanding glass, such as wind screens or balcony railings or greenhouses or things like that, three of them say if the panes are 20 feet, 24 feet wide, 24 feet of glass with nothing on it, and the others are silent. In terms of lighting and landscaping, for indoor lighting, seven of them say that either, they say there should be timers or sensors, or they say you should turn them off. And four call for either providing or drawing the blinds, curtains, or shades, and five say during migration, but seven say all year. In terms of outdoor lighting, five say no spotlights, no searchlights, no beams, no floodlights, no lasers. And in terms of lighting architectural features and art, one says no, and one says 100 watt bulb, not a big bulb. In terms of landscaping and water, five say, don't plant landscaping or put a water feature near clear or reflective glass, I would say just keep the landscaping and treat the glass. Some say, don't put mirrors in the landscaping, and vent grates also should follow the 2x4 rule, one of them thought of. So what should Emeryville do? Well, we could have voluntary measures, we'd have to rely on persuasion, it could be an option for a density bonus, maybe. We could rely on environmental review of each project. Sequo does not have something like this in its set of things, questions that have to be asked, but if impacts are found, we could add a mitigation measure about that. It could be part of the standard conditions of approval. That would only affect projects that require standard conditions of approval. We could add them to our design guidelines. Of course, that would only apply to projects that require design review, but it would give, compared to an ordinance, it would give the staff the flexibility to approve things that met the spirit of the guidelines. We could have an ordinance amending the planning regulations. This would require staff to apply the standards to the letter of the law, but it only applies to projects that require planning approval. It could be an ordinance amending the building regulations, that would apply to anything that needs a building permit. It could, or not, be similar to the Cal Building Standards Commission proposal or Oakland's measures. What Cal Green proposal is, is to treat 90% of the glass on the lower 40 feet and 60% above that, and to treat gazebos, atriums, pavilions, passageways, and corners. And it does not apply to residential buildings, although we could. The pattern meeting the 2x4 rule, etched, frittered, filmed, laminated, channel glass or glass block, grills, nets, sunshades, or blinds, it doesn't say you have to analyze whether it's reflective or not. Time switches or occupancy sensors, and they do mention the migration time, and it does not address outdoor lighting or landscaping, but we could. So what, this is staff's recommendation about what we might consider. Applicability, glass panes that are 12 square feet, that would mean these windows would not need it, because each pane, I don't think is more than 12 square feet. Treat 90% of the facade or freestanding glass, like balconies and such, with screens, nets, patterns, art, translucent glass, grooved glass block, clear glass block doesn't work, louvers, photovoltaics, there are photovoltaics that are in the glass. And with a biologist's approval, I don't know if the biologist is the one to tell if it's going to reflect, but somebody has to study. Mullions, grates, louvers, overhangs, awnings, recesses, and angled glass. For outdoor lighting, Emeryville already prohibits uplighting. We could also prohibit spotlights, beams, searchlights, floodlights, lasers, mercury vapor. We could allow lighting of architectural features with small bulbs that are downlights, and we can allow walls to be lighted eight feet high for security. In terms of interior lighting, we can require the project to include automatic shut-off with timers or photo sensors, and that shades, blinds, curtains, or other window coverings are added as part of the building contract, usually they're put in after the building's done. We don't usually like to say things about operations because they're, they can't be approved as part of the design. Site design, we can say no mirrors in the landscaping, vent grates, same pattern as glass treatment, and for atria indoors, no landscaping near clear glass, and outdoors, no landscaping near the glass that would reflect or. Or again, we can say treat the glass and keep the landscaping. So these are the discussion questions that were in the staff report. First of all, does the commission want to adopt BirdSafe building standards in Emeryville? And if so, what form should they take? Voluntary measures, design guidelines, CEQA mitigation measures, standard conditions of approval, planning regulations amendment, building code amendment? Should the standards apply citywide, or should they just be near large open spaces and water? Should they apply to the lower 60 feet or the lower 40 feet or the whole building? Is the Alameda ordinance a good basis for the content of the standards, although I did make some staff recommended edits to that? Does the commission have any other comments or suggestions for the adoption of BirdSafe standards in Emeryville? So that completes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, I want to open up for questions from the commission. I'll start here to my right this time with Commissioner Sohane.
So I'll just go over each of these questions and make my comments.
This is an opportunity for us to ask questions to the staff. And then if you have comments, we'll have an opportunity later to make comments.
After the public has an opportunity to speak.
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, under two, what kind of projects do not require planning approval? You know, so under standard condition of approval?
Speaking to your microphone.
So understanding, standard condition of approval, what projects do not require planning approval?
Only small projects.
Okay.
Or projects that are permitted by right and meet all the design requirements in the code.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a lot. I mean, it would be, trying to think of something that would affect windows that wouldn't require planning approval.
We do, we do staff-level design review if people put new windows in, right?
Yeah. If, 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 if windows are replaced in kind, that typically wouldn't trigger design review.
But would that trigger, like, the BirdSafe ordinance to be applied to it if we adopted one?
Well, that's the question. It depends on what you adopt. If you made it part of the building code, then yes. If you made it part of design review guidelines, then no.
And then a follow-up on that is, so in your presentation, you mentioned that the building regulations amendment, that would be the most strictest form of, you know, adoption. So what are the cons of selecting that particular, you know, form of standard?
It would be the most restrictive because it would apply to more buildings. I think if that were done, we would have to make sure that somehow the applicants and the architects knew about it before they started designing. I think the advantage to the design guidelines is they see it before they prepare their planning commission drawings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Young?
In terms of how do you come up with some of the ideas on, the past ideas for the informations, like in the studies itself? Bird awareness has been around for 40 years. Have we had problems with birds running into our buildings here in Emeryville? Do we see that as a situation?
We haven't kept track of it, but we do see birds flying into the building, that building, the office building, the city office building.
So there's been other examples of stencils. I've, you know, heard of things like raptor stencils and stuff like that.
Raptor stencils, I sort of saw a history of the articles on this. Someone published an article saying that raptor stencils worked, and then other people have debunked that. Birds don't recognize raptor stencils as raptors, and they're usually put one in a big window. If someone wanted to put a whole bunch of them so that they made that pattern, it would work, but probably people wouldn't want to do that.
That's my questions.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Yeah, I just had a question about the exemption on residential. Is that, is that mostly because residential is hard to regulate? What, what, how, what is the role of the only, only applying to commercial?
I think it's partly just not wanting to make the homeowners have to do expensive things. Also, they don't have the big areas of glass that the big buildings do. And they don't present as mu, I'm talking about houses. They don't present as much of a hazard at night for migrating birds. But their picture windows could still be a problem.
Right, yeah, that's what I wondered.
Commissioner Barretta?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the processes for changing some of these legal documents that you outlined in the staff report. Can you talk a little bit about what it would take to add a section to the design guidelines and what it would take to amend the building regulations?
We could add a section to the section of the design guidelines on architectural and materials. So it'd be pretty easy to pop that in, it's kind of like we did with the family-friendly design guidelines.
And would that require planning commission approval and city council approval as well?
Yes.
Okay. Would that be the same case for the building regulations, that it would need approval from the city council?
It would definitely need approval from the council. We'd probably bring it to the planning commission?
Not, not normally. The building code is on a three-year cycle, and it's due to be updated very soon for the, this three-year cycle. It will take effect on January 1st. There are mandatory sections of the code that cities have to adopt, and then there are optional sections. The Green Building Code, which is where this is proposed to be put by the Building Standards Commission. I guess the Green Building Code itself is mandatory, but there are sections of it that are optional. So this is something that we could include as an optional section of the Green Building Code. And I will add also that it does not necessarily have to be done in time for this cycle that begins on January 1st, because we can amend the code mid-cycle if we want, if we want to.
And can we add it as a mandatory item?
We can make it mandatory for us. It's not mandatory that the city adopt it, but if we can adopt it as a mandatory thing, yes.
I have one last follow-up question. Part of the reason why I was asking this is because I'm just wondering, like, what about the cost-benefit analysis for staff, staff's time versus the impact, you know, like, versus being able to enforce these things with, you know, the different legal documents here? And I guess I'm just wondering, like, which one of these would, do you think would be the best use of staff's time to amend or to add a section for BirdSafe buildings? Like, is there one that's more time-consuming, more difficult, more?
If I may, I think this is kind of getting into the discussion. I would suggest you wait and have public comment and then discuss these questions. So I mean, it sounds like a little more than a clarifying question.
Commissioner Keller?
I just had a question on the decals and the things that you put on the windows to warn the birds or anything. Those, to me, from what I could see in slides, they cause, they obscure the view from the building. Is that correct? They're not opaque from the building? So to put these things on the window, you're pretty much obliterating the purpose that you have these big windows, and that's the view outside.
Well, that's why I showed examples.
Right. And from what I could see on the examples, they obscured the view.
Somewhat.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I do actually have a follow-up question. The, you have listed the planning regulations and the building regulations. What is the difference between those two?
The planning regulations are Chapter 9 that we use here in the planning commission, and the building regulations are a different chapter. They're what the building permit people use when buildings are under construction or getting ready to be under construction.
Okay. And so in terms of the, the building process, a typical applicant would see the design guidelines first. They would review the planning regulations, and then the building regulations would be the final?
When they're doing their construction drawings.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for a minute.
The, if I could just elaborate, the building regulations is basically the state building code with local modifications. It's pretty much the same throughout California, and most architects are familiar with it. The planning regulations are basically our zoning regulations, and those vary from one city to another.
Thank you, Charlie. Are there any more questions from the remaining commissioners? All right, I have a couple of questions. Do we have any feedback or data from other cities that have implemented similar standards and how that impacts development in those cities?
No.
No?
I don't have that information.
I'm not completely understanding the two-by-four rule, so I'm hoping that you can go over that one more time for us.
Okay, let's go back to it. There. So when birds are flying, they're about two inches high, and they're about four inches wide. So they know if they, they can't fly through something that's that width. So, and what people have found is that, and this is, there've been experiments where people have used these. There's some, somebody has something rigged up where they can put a net in front of the thing they're testing and capture the birds, and they don't kill themselves. And they can try different things. So they've tested these out, and they've found that this, this works. The birds don't fly into the buildings. And it's been used on buildings, and it's worked. The birds did not fly into the buildings. So that's two inches apart, eighth of an inch wide vertically, or four inches apart, quarter inch wide horizontally, or any kind of art or pattern that does that.
I see.
Or dots.
Got it. Now, a follow-up question that I have is about the type of birds that we have in Emeryville. Do we have any information or data that pertains to the type of birds that might migrate through our city or that live here year-round?
A lot of different kinds of birds have been studied. A lot of the studies have been done in the east. That's partly why San Francisco Academy of Sciences did a study. And we have a lot of hummingbirds. We have some raptors. We have shorebirds. We have the yard birds, the robins and the...
Finches.
The finches, yes. And those kinds of birds.
Great. So we have shorebirds, hummingbirds, which we saw in the presentation, yardbirds.
Well, birds like robins and finches and wrens and sparrows and those kinds of birds.
Okay. Thank you, Diana.
And lots of pigeons.
Yes.
Those are my questions. Before we open up to public comment, I want to see if there are any other questions here. All right. So this time I want, we have one more question from Commissioner Barretta.
Well, this is actually, I don't know if this is appropriate time to talk about this, but is it okay if I answer one of the questions that Chair Gertl asked about the impact? Because we worked on this in Alameda where I work. Is it okay?
Yes, please.
About that here, now? So Alameda adopted their ordinance last year, and we've had several development proposals for large-scale projects since that ordinance passed. And a lot of the things that are in the ordinance apply to larger-scale buildings, and a lot of the residential buildings are exempt, largely due to the curtain, or one of the, like, curtain options there. But I have not heard of a single developer that has been deterred or complained about having to comply with the BirdSafe building ordinance at all. So that's all the data that I have, but I've not had a single complaint about that. And we have had projects that have had to comply with this.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right. So we're going to open it up for public comment here at this point. For anybody that would like to speak on behalf of this item on the agenda, I'll invite you to turn in your speaker card here to the left. And you're welcome to step up here. You have three minutes for public comment. And you're, you can go jump right in.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Noreen Whedon. Oops. And I'm with Golden Gate Audubon. And thank you, Diana, for the presentation. A couple of things just in general about birds. They're beautiful, they're valuable, they provide ecological services for us. Residents and visitors come and appreciate birds. In Emeryville, there are over 185 species of birds. They've been documented here. Birds connect us with nature, and they show us the danger in the environment. The canary in the coal mine was a real thing. They told us about DDT and the environment. And today, birds are telling us about climate change. I don't know if any of you read, but there was an article last week that spoke to a crisis in birds. There are 3 billion less birds than there were in the 1970s. That's breeding birds in Canada and the United States. The study was published in the journal Science, and it reviewed data from the past 50 years. So the study documented the second highest cause of bird mortality is window collisions. The highest is outdoor cats. The good news is that this is something you can address today by supporting BirdSafe building ordinance or regulation. Over a year ago, the Emeryville City Council requested that planning evaluate BirdSafe building standards, and the staff report lists peer-reviewed scientific studies on the issue of bird building collisions and negative impacts from artificial night lighting. Golden Gate Audubon offers professional-level classes for architects and other interested parties, and provides an AIA CEU. Architects are creative problem solvers, and there are many solutions. It's not just a single thing that has to be applied everywhere. Effective solutions can vary from UV-treated glass to louvers to insect screens, artistic etchings, marketing films, grill work, and more. As the Emeryville staff report notes, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service studies show over a million birds die each day because of bird building collisions. There are 46 million bird watchers in the United States, and that's an $80 billion industry. So people do care. Birds see the reflection of habitat in windows, and they think it's a thing that they can fly through or to, and that's when the collisions occur. But there are many ways to treat the glass, and a BirdSafe building ordinance has not been a problem for other cities. On September 12th of 20, of this year, sorry, Berkeley passed an ordinance, their CAC, Community Environmental Advisory Commission, passed an ordinance, and it's going to their city council now. As Emeryville Bird, BirdSafe ordinance or regulation would save natural resources and birds, and as the staff report indicates, the solution can pay for itself in energy savings. Golden Gate Audubon strongly supports Emeryville BirdSafe building regulations to apply citywide to all new and remodeled buildings where permits required. This would be, bolster Emeryville's goals of sustainability and design excellence. And you can take positive action today to prevent bird mortality from collisions through an Emeryville BirdSafe building regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? All right, is he, a hand, friend, if you'd like to fill out a card?
I have a question. Can I fill it out after?
If you'd like to speak for public comment, you're welcome to speak. And the questions should be addressed here, and then we can facilitate an answer.
Yeah, you don't really need to fill out a card. We, we, we know your name.
I have a question. I know nothing about this, but I had written down Audubon Society on my, in my notebook. I just have a question about the, the effect of the sun on the glass and these anti-reflective measures. Do they help mitigate the glare of the sun off glass buildings? That's one question that I have. And then the second question I have has to do with height. Are the bird safety measures the same for all floors of a building? If a building is tall, are the bird safety measures different on the lower floors than they are on the upper floors? Those are my questions.
Thank you, friend. All right. So are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, I'm closing public comment. And we're going to go ahead and open it up for deliberation from the commissioners. And I'll start here on my left with Commissioner Keller.
I don't have anything in particular. I see the need and necessity. I question a couple of things. If birds are cliding into glass, we need to treat all glass the same if we're going to, whether it's residential or commercial. The thing is, we don't build single-family homes here, so when we build a residential building, it's usually a fairly large building. My experience living in a high-rise, I've seen more bird impacts on four-story buildings than I have experienced in my own home. And the data here is showing that, so I think we need to treat it appropriately when we look at this. I don't know if we want to look at, whether we do design guidelines... I don't know if we want to look at, whether we do design guidelines or ordinances or things like that. I always like to take the approach of using a carrot rather than a stick if we can, but I don't know, if we're not getting a lot of pushback. So, I'm still kind of open on the subject and I'm glad this is a study session because there's things to go. But I want to consider, at least in Emeryville, that if the bird strikes are higher incidence in lower buildings, then, and we're do, we are building more residential than commercial, so I think we need to look at buildings as buildings and not what inhabits them. I am a little concerned, being a person who is claustrophobic, being able to see out my windows is critical. I never shut my blinds until this last week when it gets really hot, but my blinds are up 24/7. And so I think that would be an issue if you're trying to control what people do in their homes or in their businesses for, you know, certain workers have certain needs. So, just want to keep those things in mind. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Barretta?
Okay, so I'll kind of, I'll go down the list of questions. I definitely support the adoption of Bird Safe Buildings and I would say that, I think that the Planning Regulation Amendment seems to make the most sense in terms of the, just being able to have the, all of the Bird Safe things in one location that are going to be reviewed or required of, most of the projects anyway. And Alameda, part of the reason why some of the, or the residential is exempt, has to do with the size of the windows and not necessarily because they specifically exempted residential buildings. And so I think that if we followed some of the size, like measurements from the Alameda ordinance, it would apply to most of the things that we see here in Emeryville. So I support applying the standard citywide and to the entire building as well. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Do you want direct answers to the list? Or are we...
We're, at this point, we're deliberation. And so if you want to answer the questions that staff is asking us to, you can use that as a guide or venture beyond that too.
Okay. So, yeah, no, so in general, I think just in terms of overarching statements, I'm really glad that we're considering this. I do think this is an important issue. We want to make sure that there is ecological health even in the urban environment. I think this is an important measure for that. In terms of, you know, our charge, we are also in charge of the general plan. And so I took a look at the general plan and I was surprised at the lack of discussion around ecological robustness, which I consider this in that category. It's not on the today's conversation, so it's not necessarily something I think it needs to be addressed immediately, but I, it was interesting that this topic brought that to my attention and that may be for future general plan development. In terms of the, so I think to question, to answer question one, do I support the adoption of building safe building standards in Emeryville? Yes. Bird safe building standards? Yes, I do. If so, what form should the standards take? I would actually suggest that they might need to be in the design guidelines and the planning regulation, not an either-or, but perhaps both. And that has to do with it being an early indicator about the importance of this to anyone who pulls out the design guidelines, but also that there may be a dimensional standard and that's more commonly found in the zoning. And so I think it just needs some thought in terms of how everything gets implemented and exactly what standards go where. So, should the standards apply citywide? I would say yes. I'd prefer citywide for administrative purposes, but also, but also just as an application. It seemed like some of the science was saying that it isn't just where there are parks, that it's wider than that, so I would support that. In terms of the lower 60 feet, again, you know, trying to stay with the science, I tend to think that it should be the entire building, but it seems like there is a little variability. I'm not, at this point, I'm glad this is a study session because I'm not exactly sure what it all means. And then is the Alameda ordinance a good basis for the content of the standard? I think it's a good basis, but again, I'd love to get additional sort of lessons learned from those who have implemented them. So, I think at this point, I might request, you know, a phone call or two to some of the other communities, just to see how their implementation has gone and whether there are any lessons learned that we can learn from. And then I would say, any other comments? Nope, I think those are my other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Young?
Okay, well, I used to live in a high-rise in Seattle on the 15th floor. I was a very urban, very, very urban area and I don't know Seattle real well. It's an extremely nature-loving kind of place. There's seagulls, there's migratory birds, there's basic birds that fly up and down, you know, basically for seasonal birds like, oh my gosh, the ducks and, you know, the geese and all that. And at the 15th floor, personally, I have never seen a bird hit my building. I lived there for a long time, but I've heard of stuff like this. Matter of fact, in one situation in Seattle, there was, there was issues of birds that were up high and they did talk about that. Which brings, I might as well just say it, I think all the buildings should do it. Maybe at the lower levels, you might get the finches and the robins and the, and the little, the little birds that just don't have the height, but on the upper ones, you will get the migratory ones that get thrown off or end up having to fly at dark. And then put all the crows and the seagulls in the middle. There is also another thing where I think it's really kind of great to have an idea on the design. I'm kind of surprised, actually, that this is an issue that's come up now. I mean, I've, I know that I was in Seattle, there's a, there's a university up in Canada, kind of a little past Vancouver, and you kind of hang a little bit to the right, to the east a little bit. And there's a, there was a situation where they did do the predatory stencils on those buildings. And they had a serious problem and the, I can't remember the name of the school, but it had a cubed shape with a center area, glass, second floor, and it would, it would make a great ruin in architecture, but the birds kept hitting it. So, in terms of mitigation, I think it would just be smart to kind of think about that now and maybe come, come back and through a voluntary purpose, bring it up with those buildings that are existing to get them to kind of say, hey, look, let's, let's, let's think about this seriously. If you go out to the, I was at the beach yesterday, should, I should have been working, but there was, there was very little birds, very few number of birds out there. I couldn't count. And there was some out there was, for me to not see that many out there at this time of year was kind of odd. I liked the, I did make it a standard and bring it into planning, and again, I brought it for the entire building. I don't think we'd want to leave this up to a voluntary situation and I don't think this is something the building department guys would really want to do. I can't imagine them standing around, you know, looking at your building, saying, you got to put something bird-wise on there.
Commissioner Young? If I can point you to the questions that are right there.
I'm answering all the questions.
Excellent.
So, number four, I think I've answered all of them except for the fact that, do they have any comments or suggestions? I'd like them to look into something that having to do with ultrasounds and sounds, maybe birds kind of can, might reflect to that in some sense. Maybe that's a low, low level, low frequency, maybe those might work with certain kinds of sounds. I could just provide some kind of outline of what my answers would be, but I, I think you guys...
This is a good time to, to provide feedback if it pertains to one of the numbers here. And if it doesn't, then you're welcome to add more comments.
Oh, I think, I think I kind of hit them all, if there's anything else.
Thank you, Commissioner Young.
Thank you.
All right, want to invite our newest member, Commissioner Sahane, for your comments.
Thank you. So just going down by the list, I definitely support the adoption of bird safety standards. There are many cities in the Bay Area that are already doing this. And it seems like there are other cities all over the US and Canada who have adopted this, so Emeryville shouldn't stay behind in that sense. And I too was looking at the general plan and yes, it is silent about, you know, this issue. The only thing, according to, you know, my interpretation, which I found close to this issue, was in the sustainability section, which talked about preservation and enhancement of natural habitat and production of biological resources. And, you know, like the city will encourage production of essential habitat and this, this standard would definitely line up with that, but I agree with Commissioner Thompson that there should be a better clarification in the general plan, but again, that's not the scope of today's meeting. In terms of what standard it should take, definitely not voluntary, because then you are just leaving it to, you know, the designer or the developer. I'm going back and forth and I don't completely understand what will benefit the most. I see a merit in putting it under design guidelines so that designers are aware of it early on in the process. But, you know, that, that shouldn't be the case, that it should only mean that the spirit of the guideline is met. They have to do something beyond that and incorporate it so that it's seen. So I'm not sure if that takes the form of Planning Regulation Amendment or some other form. And then the other thing that is unclear to me is what kind of design guidelines? Like, I know that you, you've put a slide that shows potential provisions. Is there any merit directing to the lead standard and having, you know, like the best parts of that brought in the design provision as well? So that, that's something that the staff can explore. In terms of whether it should be citywide or near vegetation, I agree, it should be citywide because, you know, birds are found everywhere in the environment. It's not just next to parks. You see them all the time near those 40th Street, San Pablo intersection and the malls out there. Is the Alameda ordinance a good basis? So I was just going through the Alameda ordinance and, you know, out there it says 35 feet, up to 35 feet. I know staff has asked a question about if it should be up to 60 feet, so out there, my recommendation was, would be to look what kind of buildings exist, what, you know, what, what buildings are coming up in the near future and then figure out what that right height should be. Based on the presentation, it seems like beyond a certain height in high-rises, it really doesn't make that huge a difference. But, but that's where, you know, there needs to be some thought put in, depending on, you know, like what, how strict of a standard this is going to be and which, which form it's going to take that, that height number is decided on. And then I would say that, you know, it shouldn't just be restricted to the commercial buildings. You know, as someone pointed out, there are a lot of residential developments and, you know, with newer projects, you see a lot of mixed use as well, which have, you know, larger panes of glasses being used on the lower floors. So, it should be for both commercial and residential buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments here from the Commissioners?
I actually had a clarification question.
Vice Chair Thompson?
I've gone a little out of order. A question about the use of residential as a term. Like, if you're a commercial-scale building, a multifamily residential building, is that still exempt? Is that considered still residential? Or is, are you saying commercial scale?
Different ordinances, we've seen, have different standards. Some, some say residential, one to three stories, so that's a house.
Okay.
Some say residential above a certain height, higher than that. Some say multifamily residential, but not houses. So, we could decide how we want to do it.
Okay. And I think just whatever we decide as we go through this, is just clarification on, on residential, is it a home or is it a multifamily? Is there a difference? You know, what is residential?
I would note that we do have a section in the code about standards for multi-unit residential buildings, and that's for residential projects with 10 units or more.
Okay.
That's kind of the threshold we, that would tend to eliminate the smaller buildings in the older residential neighborhoods and would capture the larger and small, and even the smaller, newer buildings.
Okay.
Commissioner Keller?
So I just, I just want to take on that. I think it's more than the size of the building and what the building holds, it's the size of the glass, you know? And if obviously the data is telling us that bird strikes happen below the level, they're hitting one-story buildings. And we're not looking to ask people to retrofit their existing homes, so basically all the single-family homes in Emeryville are exempt. So it's basically the new buildings we're going to be making, and we're going to be making a lot of buildings. And, you know, I'm thinking of the building you live in is, has a lot of glass. It's only three stories, but there's some big panes of glass in there. And if they're striking that size of building, that's what we need to look at. And I think it's, as we're doing this whole citywide, I think the main thing we need to look at is the size of the glass. Is it going to cause a potential hazard? Because you guys are on the greenway, so there's a lot of birds in that area. And I just think that we need to just look at any potential, because we're a small city and because birds are in such danger, we need to look at all possibilities where they're going to collide with glass and try to eliminate those. That's my, my thought on it.
Commissioner Barretta?
I just want to add to that, that part of the reason why I think that the Alameda ordinance is a good one to look at is because it does just that in, in that the dimensions of the glass are what determine the applicability and not necessarily the type of building that you're using or that you're considering.
Are there any other comments from Commissioners? All right, I'll go ahead and jump in here. So, I want to thank Noreen for joining us this night, tonight, and bringing up the article that was posted last week. I too read that article and it was really alarming. That article says that 3 billion, or 29% of bird population since the 1970s have disappeared. That's alarming. We're, I think that we should do everything in our power moving forward to help rectify that. And this is a step in that direction. So I do support Bird Safe Building Standards. Some, some things that I read in that study that were not mentioned tonight that I want to bring to light. Some other causes of, of bird loss in population were, one, destruction of bird habitat. Living here in Emeryville, I think that with the marshlands, that's already happened at this point in the past, but we have laws now that protect that land. And widespread use of pesticides is another reason that birds were disappearing. And while that may not be a design guideline recommendation, I think that that is something to be considered here in Emeryville in terms of protecting our biodiversity, because that's really important to me and a lot of the community members that I speak with. And so, be interested in exploring that with city staff as well in the future. The, let's see, so going back to the questions, does the Commission, do I support? Yes, so question number one. For two, I believe that this should be part of the planning regulations as well as the building regulations. Three, I, I want to go in terms of what the data is showing us. Here, we're saying 60 feet and beneath is what, what we're experiencing and what the data shows, that birds are running into buildings. And so, I would fair on the side of what data shows us for that. I do support a citywide recommendation. And for four, I believe that the Alameda ordinance is a great start and that we can strengthen that a bit and we have that opportunity here. So, I think that's a great place to reference and begin with. For five, San Francisco does have a pest management through design guidelines, and I think that's something that we could explore and include if this were some changes that we're making to design guidelines, which is mentioned by some of my colleagues here. And so I think that San Francisco may be a great model to learn from in terms of including that in our design guidelines. And those are all my comments. Does, do we have any more comments from Commissioners? Okay.
But if I could ask, Noreen, we're about, you don't have to come up, we're about to finish, but I wanted to ask you something off-subject here, but about birds, so if you could hang on just a few minutes, and I have something to show you too.
Great. All right. Great, all right. That said, I want to, so we're complete here with this study session. Are there any clarification or further feedback that you need from us, Diana?
We got it.
Great. Okay, so we'll move on to the item number nine. This is Planning Commissioner Comments. I'll start with Commissioner Keller on the left. Oh, any comments here? Oh.
No comments.
Okay. I want to welcome you again, Commissioner Sahane. I'm looking forward to working with you and really interested in the feedback that you gave this evening, so thank you.
Thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you as well and the staff. Thanks.
Excellent. All right, I do have some comments. I want to thank city staff for responding to some of my comments in the last meeting that we had in regard to safety for pedestrians with a tree that was overhanging. I noticed an immediate change to that location. The branches that were impeding in the pedestrian right-of-way are now gone, and I feel safe walking under that tree. Thank you. I'm sorry. And so, since that was so effective, I have another piece of feedback that I posted on Click It Fix It about over a year ago. And this relates to the overpass bridge bike lanes near IKEA. I have multiple neighbors and myself that use that on a daily basis and have asked through the app about street cleaning. And so, I've noticed that glass stays in the bike lane for weeks at a time without any, anything being cleaned up. Recently, there was a piece of windshield that was left there, looked like maybe from an accident. And I haven't been there in the last couple of days, but it was there for at least two weeks. And so, that makes me have to go out into the street and ride outside of the bike lane, which is not a very safe thing for bicyclists. And so I just want to bring that to your attention and ask that we do something in that bridge to have some reoccurring regular cleaning to increase safety for bicyclists. Thank you. And I think we have a comment here from Vice Chair Thompson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff and the city in general for the shoreline cleanup that was this weekend. And I know that wasn't mentioned. So, I attended with my husband and son, and we had lots of fun and really enjoyed it. So, thanks for having those sorts of things.
Great.
And did anyone participate in the poggging that we had last Saturday? John and I participated, and that's the jog and pick up trash along the way. And we picked up four bags of trash, basically just along the freeway out in front of IKEA.
That's great.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
I participated in San Francisco for Battle of the Bay and the coastal cleanup and was able to help clean up the Heron's Head location. So unfortunately, I didn't get to do a local cleanup, but I was out there that day. All right, are there any other comments from Commissioners? All right, that said, I want to close this meeting here at 7:43.